That was a great agenda.
And I just hope I can come today.
Just waiting for the six o'clock hour.
Wait all of a sudden.
I know. We're counting down the seconds. It's almost six. Okay, my computer is showing six o'clock and my name is Julia Johnson, Mayor of Cedar Woolley, and I'm going to call the City Council Study Session into order. If you will all please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Before we begin, I'm going to actually read a proclamation. So as I announced last week, Charlie received the Call to Service Award from the Evergreen Chapter of the American Society for Public Administration. So it was very impressive. I sat in on the award ceremony today and it was great. There was a lot of information that I gleaned from that and I'm glad I had that opportunity. Thanks for sharing that, Charlie. But in that, this award honors those who demonstrated devotion to public service, either as a practitioner, as an academic teaches and encourages students to enter public service, or any other individual who appreciates the value of public service and provides support and encouragement so that the best among us will follow in his or her career. So Charlie has clearly exemplified that. There were some really great things that were said about him. And along those lines, this week happens to be the Public Service Recognition Week. And we have a proclamation. And if you will bear with me, I am going to read this proclamation. It's a great proclamation. Whereas Americans are served every day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. And whereas public employees take not only jobs but solemn oaths. And whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, aid workers, healthcare professionals, intelligence officers, and others, risk their lives every day in service to the Constitution and the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas every day, 24 hours each day and 365 days a year, City of Cedar Woolley residents and visitors are served by the employees of the City of Cedar Woolley. And whereas, city employees provide efficiency, dedication, professionalism, and integrity through the essential services to residents and visitors, including public safety, emergency medical services, firefighting and prevention, code enforcement, transportation, sewer and stormwater systems, solid waste, cemetery, infrastructure upgrades and maintenance, municipal court, parks, financial policy and record management, information technology, planning and building, and provide vital, strategic, administrative, and supportive functions. And whereas, city employees have much to offer, as demonstrated by their expertise and innovative ideas, and serve as examples by passing or institutional knowledge to train the next generation of public service. And whereas, city employees are representative of Cedar Woolley's community and come from a broad spectrum of either ethical, racial, and religious backgrounds with abilities, ages, gender identities, and sexual orientations. And whereas, among the COVID-19 pandemic, city employees continue to show their dedication on the front lines and behind the scenes to tackle the city's challenges on behalf. And whereas, the city employees are our friends. They are our neighbors and family members, committed to making life better for each of us, every one of us. And whereas, without these public servants, continuum would be impossible in democracy that regularly changes its representation leaders and elected officials. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Julia Johnson, Mayor of the City of Cedar Woolley, Washington, do hereby proclaim the week of May 1st to May 7th, 2022, as Public Service Recognition Week, to recognize and promote the important contributions of these public servants and encourage residents to reach out and thank these city employees and all public servants for continuing to keep safe and selfishly serving during these unprecedented times. Signed, Mayor Julia Johnson. And I think that that's very true of our employees. And so, not to be cheesy here, but I think we should give our city employees a round of applause. Thank you very much. And now we will move on to our business items. And we're going to begin with the confirmation of Kelly Conken. Did I say that right? I didn't say that right, did I? To the position of Finance Director with authorization for the mayor to negotiate and sign an employment agreement. I apologize.
Okay. Kelly Conken is here in the audience. And I wanted to just say a few words before I turn the microphone over to Kelly. First off, as you know, our Finance Director, Debbie Burton, has retired and she's been serving in a consultant role as an interim for us for the last little bit. We've been looking for somebody for about three months. It's been an exhaustive search. And Kelly was our most recent person that we had the opportunity to interview. She comes to us with, well, a long history with Cedar Woolley. She's from Cedar Woolley, graduated from Cedar Woolley High School, went up to Western, got a bachelor's in accounting there, got an MBA there as well, and then she had another long history with the State Auditor's Office from 2014 until now, where she's been an Assistant Audit Manager. There's a long history of state auditors moving into local government, particularly into Finance Director and Assistant and Deputy Finance Director positions. So we're really confident with her background being a good fit. And of course, we get audited by the state every year as well. So we will at least have a full, good understanding of what the state's looking for going forward. And Kelly has audited grants and other things in the region. She's audited a number of jurisdictions around here. She can tell you a lot more about that. Has not audited Cedar Woolley for some reasons, particularly a family member here who works for the city, but has audited a lot of the governments around us. And then has managed auditors, has managed her own team for the last several years. So has that experience. And I think you'll see in talking with her, she's just going to be a great fit here. We're delighted. We've had five panel interviews with her. So I've had a chance to sit on every one of those. She's just done an amazing job. She sat down with the council and the mayor. At one point, three counselors represented the council and the mayor. She interviewed the mayor and I. She interviewed with Doug Merriman, was the Finance Director, two Finance Directors ago, and of course, my predecessor, and with Debbie Burton, and then with the finance staff, the senior management team. And I think that's all five. I hope so. Okay. So, moving on, thinking ahead. What you're being asked to do is approve, authorize the mayor to essentially approve a contract with her. And then that essentially is confirmation of her hire as well. And then, moving forward, we do recognize Kelly hasn't worked in a city specifically, and so there is a learning cap that we're going to be focused on addressing there. And she'll be mentored by Debbie, who will stay on with us as a consultant by contract, and Doug to some extent as well. So we're fortunate to have our two previous Finance Directors available. We also have a great network of people we know, people in the region, and she's got a great network of people who have left the State Auditor's Office and now work in and around us as well. So a lot of people she can pick up the phone and call. But we're all really, really excited to have Kelly join us. She's got a lot of upward potential. I just wanted to tell you in checking her references, a few of the comments that came out, Kelly fills holes when people are out. She's rapidly developing. She's flexible and supportive. She can be direct but has really good tact. And of course, as an auditor, sometimes you have to be quite direct, as you do as a Finance Director. She's solution oriented and she has just a great aptitude for growth. We're really excited about her potential. We're excited about what she brings to the table now. And with that, I'll turn the microphone over to Kelly to say a few words, and then council will open it to questions. Go from there.
Good evening. My first time standing up in front of you, up in front of you. So I'm a little bit nervous, but I'm really excited to join the team. As you all know, I'm from Cedar Woolley, and me and my husband live here now and are raising our family here. So really excited to continue my career here and hope to stick around for a really, really long time. I also hope to utilize my experience with the state auditors in this role and then just learn from yourselves and the staff as I go, years going forward.
So would you take some questions from the?
Of course.
Okay. Is there questions for Kelly from any of the councils?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Just, what about this position in the City of Cedar Woolley excites you the most?
I think just getting, moving from auditing to doing, I'm excited to learn more about the city and a position I can grow into for many years. My current position, there is some potential for more learning, you know, every audit, learning more. Lots of new requirements come out, so learning more. But in my current position, I feel a little capped, and especially doing the auditing, what other people are doing. So just excited to get in and start doing, start doing the work myself.
Very good. Anyone else?
Kelly, I think this is more of a comment. I'm just really proud that a local person wanted to come back and succeed in this community. And I think with your experience with the Auditor's Office and, well, I don't know if it's auditor, you know, plus your MBA and UBA, I just think you're going to be a great asset to Cedar Woolley. And please stick around, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we live in a great community. So I'm glad to be serving the community even more directly than even with the state auditors.
When did you graduate from SWHS?
2008.
Okay. I've said this before, and I'm very much a fan of hiring local. And this just goes to show that we do have talented, well-qualified individuals for our positions within our own community. And I am so excited to have a fellow Woolley girl representing.
Excited to work with all of you.
Kelly, I was fortunate enough to sit in on your interview, and you impressed me with your answers. And like I told you, you're a board ship now, and we're just like a big ship sailing off into the future. So, and you'll be, you'll be playing a huge part in that. And I want to welcome you aboard, and I hope to see you more and talk with you in the future.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
I just, I want to thank the people who went through the process to find you as well, and the council members, and the mayor, and Charlie for vetting. And I mean, what a find. I mean, that's pretty awesome to have somebody with so much experience that can bring to the city. And we really need it right now. So it is really quite the find. Good job, guys. Thank you.
I want to thank you for going through, what is it, five interviews? That is a gauntlet. So I look forward to seeing you work with the city. So, thank you.
It's three in one morning, so kind of knocked some of them out all in one, one day. So.
But you did great.
Thank you.
So I was in on the first interview, which was a couple of days before you sat in on the three interviews, back to back. And then I was at the very end with Joe and with Chuck and Brendan. Yeah, who's, who's here, I think, online. So anyway, Kelly, I got to tell you, I'm very excited about you coming on board. And I know you're going to do great things here. I know you're nervous, but you will do well. You really will.
Thank you.
So, is there anything else? Okay, if not, then, I'm looking for a motion. I'm looking for a motion to confirm Kelly Conken to the position of Finance Director with the authorization for the mayor to negotiate and sign an employment agreement.
I will happily make that motion.
Okay.
I will second that motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilman Lavaca. Any more discussion of questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose same sign. Oh, there you are, Brendan. And oppose same sign. There you go. We're on board with you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
See you at four o'clock tomorrow, Kelly, in the morning.
Well, that's fantastic. We're excited. This is very good. It's very, very good. Okay, moving on to item number two, which is the lease of 802 Ball Street, the old Cedar Woolley Library, to the Skagit Valley Family YMCA. So this has been many years in the making and it's come together. Yay. So Charlie?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Yeah, I'll go ahead and kick it off, having relocated. So yes, this is many years in the making. The library's been vacant for a while, as I understand it, certainly during my time here. And Mayor Johnson, as I mentioned in the documentation, had been working with Dean Snyder, who's here from YMCA. For a while, they're my predecessors, had had some conversations as well. And the goal certainly being to have YMCA have a presence in Cedar Woolley and to have that presence be in that old library building. So we've really gotten the ball rolling here this spring because as things have opened up and restarted, we can see the future a little bit more clearly. And part of that is some of the sports camp grant funding that's come into the city that is benefiting YMCA and Boys and Girls Club. But YMCA also has an interest in creating a youth drop-in center. And I don't want to steal too much of Dean's thunder there. There are two ways I can go with this. I can talk about the lease now, or we can just turn it over to Dean. I think I'll turn it over to Dean first, and we can talk about the lease second.
Welcome, Dean.
Thank you. Thanks, Charlie. Thank you for having me here. I'm really pleased to be here. The mission of the Skagit Valley Y is to create positive community change through relationships by empowering the mind, body, spirit of all. So we're here as a community-based organization in much the same way as you all are in building community here in Cedro. And our role is to partner with others. I've always said, if we can do it, it's almost certain that we can do it better in partnership with someone else. And I'm thrilled at the opportunity to partner with Cedar Woolley. I've been at the Y here in Skagit for the last four years. I had a long career in college athletics prior coming to, coming to Skagit. And when I did come here, I was introduced throughout to the community and to Mayor Johnson. I was introduced. And after we, I just said, "Thank you for your partnership in building our building at Hol Road, and thank you all for your role in that." And I said, "Isn't this great to be at the start of a long partnership?" And she says, "Well, isn't that fabulous?" And she stands up and goes and gets the map and said, "This is Cedro, and here are some of the things we would like to do." And I was just thrilled with that. And it was at that meeting that we talked at first about this library and the potential here and what could happen, and how perhaps at some point, if the time was right, the Skagit Y could branch out and provide some of our service to this community. And just to grow into a community that has already served us well as a Y, but we're already partnering also with the school district here. And so it's an opportunity to grow further into Cedar Woolley. And so, we're thrilled about being here. As Charlie mentioned, the, there's a grant, a SEEK grant that is funded through the city that the Y is taking access to, to provide programs. And the programs so far are going to be threefold. We'll run a football, a flag football program for youth, and so that'll engage both youth and adults as volunteers in the program. We'll also have a running club and a drop-in center. And this is kind of the beginning effort. The drop-in center is probably something that we'd like to continue on. We see that as preventive measures for keeping, you know, keeping kids in a positive mindset, learning things that can be helpful for them to launch into adulthood, and avoiding some of the pitfalls that do happen as well. That drop-in center right now is scheduled for youth 12 to 18. We target probably our highest group age will be in that 12 to 16 range is what we're thinking. And we are currently seeking other grant opportunities to maintain that and keep that going long-term. But we also are looking at possibilities, other possibilities as well. We want to, once we begin engaging with Cedar Woolley as a community, we want to see what really the need is here. And we're hearing a lot about childcare as well. The Skagit Valley Y is involved in childcare. We are, I believe, we're the largest provider of childcare in Skagit County. We are partnering with the school district in a preschool program at Central Elementary School right now. There's a possibility that this library space could be an early learning center. It could be before or after-school programs, if we could work out transportation with school district. There are a lot of possibilities for this space. And right now, we see many of them and look forward to working with the community, finding out what really fits best. So with that, Charlie, if you would like to discuss the nature of the lease, we can do that. And before Charlie does that, I would say that I brought this lease to our Skagit Y Board earlier last week, and at our board meeting Tuesday, last Tuesday, and we had a unanimous vote of approval. Our board stands firmly behind our Y, serving and partnering together with the City of Cedar Woolley to serve this community.
Thank you, Dean. And to me, this is a classic win-win. We've got a vacant building that we get occupied, and YMCA has a mission that fits really well with some of the needs in our community, and they get to serve that out. The way the lease is set up, one of the things you'll hear from me probably over and over again is I'm not a huge fan of short-term leases. And I like leases that automatically renew, because every lease you're going to see is going to have a cancellation clause. There's always an out. This particular lease goes for five years, and then it automatically renews if there's not notice before that cancellation, or before the end of it. And there is a three-month termination clause in there. So either party can get out at that point. What we would likely do though is, we're both, I think, reasonable people and reasonable agencies. If there's some issue, we're going to work it out. If we're not seeing services come out of the library for some reason, we're going to talk about, you know, how to rethink this, or do something different, or we as a city still own the building. So there are all those things. But I'm excited about the fact that, one, we have a vacant building. It gets used for the community's benefit. Two, we're also paying utilities on that building, trying to keep that building going. We also have a partner who can share in those costs. So YMCA will be paying the utilities. They will be handling the interior maintenance. We are going to share the costs of some of the major systems. For example, if there's something that needs to be replaced in a couple of years, and we've already been saving money for it, we'll pay a percentage of that, and they'll pay the, kind of the final two years or three years on that. We're going to work that out. But then, once that thing is replaced, then they're responsible for it going forward. The outside of the building, we're still going to maintain that. And there's some reasons for that. One of them is, we've got crews out here in Cedar Woolley who do that. This is an integrated facility with the senior center and the community center. And, you know, for example, we thought at one point about, we didn't really think about it, but we talked about the issue of snowplowing. And how would that work if they did their own snowplowing? Well, it would be a mess because there are shared parking lots all through those three facilities. So it makes sense for us to do the snowplowing out there. It makes sense for us to do the maintenance and continue to take care of things. And we've got plans already for replacement of things out there. I want to thank Nathan a lot. I know Nathan's worked very closely with Dean on a whole bunch of operational issues and transition issues. And Public Works Ops has helped us move FEMA in there and then move FEMA out of there. And then they're trying, they're working really hard with La Connor's Library to move out all the shelving for the library. That we're surplusing a lot of that to La Connor. And there's just a lot of stuff getting shuffled around to make sure that we're ready for YMCA's occupation. So that has been going on. A few other things you might want to know, the rental fee, and these are all in the agenda cover material, but the rental fee was a dollar a year. And that recognizes what YMCA is doing for, at least that's what it's proposed at. It recognizes what YMCA is doing for the community. Essentially, what they're doing, the types of activities, if we had a Parks and Recreation Department, the kind of things we would engage in. So we're recognizing that benefit in the lease rate itself. There are some details in Exhibit B that talk a little bit more about what Dean was mentioning in terms of activities that they'll have going on there. They can make use of the building. They can essentially sublease the building. And the way we're looking at this is partnerships. So they have to be related to the mission of YMCA. But if there's another agency, I'm just going to throw out Boys and Girls Club. Maybe they do something complimentary. It makes sense for the two of them to work together for a period of time. They won't have to come back to us and amend the lease to necessarily do that. They can't lease it out to some private entity, you know, doing something, helping them make a bunch of money. Although, Dean would probably love to have a Starbucks in there or something. And we might too. We could always talk about that, if you want to go there. Those are the main provisions. Happy to take any questions. I'm sure Dean knows as well. Yeah, we just got together and started collaborating and trying to figure out how this could work best for both parties. And this is what we've come up with.
Very good.
One thing I would add is we've got three of our lead, lead staff that are all Cedar Woolley residents as well, and they're equally thrilled to be spending time in this site here as opposed to driving to Mount Vernon.
And I just have one comment. So I've been meeting with a lot of the different agencies around here, service groups. And one of the things that was brought up by Family Promise, Andrea Wall, Director of Family Promise, was that Cedar Woolley really needs a place where children can drop in.
Yeah.
And I said, "Well, that's going to happen." So it was great to be able to say that the Y was going to be here and that you will be offering that service. Because it is much needed, and other agencies are identifying it. And I think it's great that Cedar Woolley can offer that through the Y.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Go ahead, Chuck.
I've got one question. That's all, that's really close to the senior center. And I would hope, and I'm sure, that there will always be adult supervision there in that building.
Indeed, yeah, absolutely. Usually our, when we're staffing youth, we've got two, you know, two staff adults on site for, you know, no more than 15 kids. And so like, that's usually our ratio. But absolutely, we have staff on the whole time. That would be, to not do so would be a serious liability problem, from where I stand. So.
Yeah. It gets pretty crowded in there if, well, let's say, your building and when Rotary has their get-together. And, I mean, it's hard, hard to find parking for some of those old seniors. So I would hope that they would reserve enough spaces where they could park.
I don't anticipate us using significant amounts of parking. Like, kids are going to come and drop in. We may have a couple parking spots for our staff that are there. But I don't see us, maybe on occasions when we have an event that we're going to put in for the community, but then that's what the parking space is for. I do see us having some great opportunity for intergenerational activities as well, partnering with Ellen at the, you know, at the senior center and putting on some, some combined events and to build some intergenerational activity.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, Dean, I've got one question for you. I love the idea of going in partnerships with you guys. And we put a lot of money, this is coming from a malcontent constituent in Cedar Woolley. We put a lot of money and we get, what, one afternoon a month or something of swim time for Cedar Woolley? Is there any way we can increase that?
Well, I would, I would love to see more Cedar Woolley families coming to our Hol Road facility as well. Particularly, the pool is what Road facility as well. Particular, the pool is what makes a lot of sense there, but I don't, we don't have an indoor pool here. So the, what, I, I think what we agreed to at that time was, was what it was. If there's an opportunity to build it and in such a way that doesn't limit members' access but includes Cedro Woolley families along with members, I'm all for it.
I think one thing that I recall is that Cedro Woolley was maybe the only city who was, who acquired that. I don't think Mount Vernon had that.
Mount Vernon didn't, but Burlington did as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I thought it was very generous of the Y to even do that. So I know it was a hard startup, but.
If, if I can be very frank about that, I, I think at the time, and I was not here at the time, there was one voice in our Y that was offering that, another was saying that might be very difficult from an operational standpoint to guarantee single city space in that, in the pool. So our, our push now is to include more together and not to, not to do anything specific for one of the cities that excludes others, but to include, be more inclusive rather than. I see lots more opportunity there, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. You know, one of the other ways, we've got Cedro students in, in our pool, Cedar Woolley students in the pool is with the swim team programs, right? So we've got the swim teams training and, and competing in that space as well. So lots of opportunity for growth and, and looking for more.
And I do have one comment regarding the parking. So Chuck, just for your benefit, you know, we're gonna be revamping the Memorial Park and I do believe on the west side of the park, there's gonna be more parking added there. So hopefully that will help alleviate some of those or open up some of those spaces for seniors. So maybe, maybe that's something that we need to look at, we need to look at before we really start with the park, is making sure that there is parking. That's a good point you bring up. Is there anything, any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Joe.
I'd just like to say, I think it's a spectacular idea. I'm really glad to see another activity possibly coming in for kids. I mean, we can't do enough to give them something to do to stay out of trouble. So I think that the programs the Y puts on are spectacular. So I appreciate your willingness to come work with us.
Looking forward to it.
I would just add that.
Yes, go ahead. Councilman Lavaca?
So when I was a kid over in Port Angeles, I spent a few years over there and they had a, a Y in there and we would do the late night Saturday night Y, which was awesome. And the kids would all come in at 10 and stay until 1 and it was a madhouse. And then they opened up a teen center down there in downtown and it was like the hangout, right? And, you know, we, we had rowdy kids. I was a smoker at 15 and 16, along with a lot of my buddies. And the teen counselors that were down there were amazing and they really had tremendous hearts for the kids and, and understanding our situations with massive amounts of grace.
Right.
And so if we have that opportunity here, that's just amazing. I mean, it really impacted me and I know it impacted my friends and we, we developed long-time relationships with those counselors, ones I'm still in touch with even though I didn't stay there very long. So, yeah, it was very cool. So I'm, I'm glad to see that coming.
Yeah.
That's neat.
It takes a village, doesn't it?
Yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I wrote this up as a first read. I did include some options for council at the end, which, which were potentially, approve the leases drafted at this meeting or at a future meeting, make edits to the lease to be discussed with YMCA with results brought back at a future meeting, or provide alternative direction of staff. So my apologies for not providing that framing, but that's.
Perfect. So up to the council, what would you like to do?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion. We approve the lease of 802 Ball to the Skagit Valley YMCA.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Owens, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. Any more discussion, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Well, this is exciting. Yes.
Great, Dean. Thank you all.
Yes, thank you.
Have a great evening.
Thank you, you too. Yeah. Dean, one last thing. It's, it's not in your contract, but it's probably something that I'm gonna ask of you. And that is, maybe after six months, come back and give us a report, give us an update on how things are going and.
Love to.
And, yeah, we would love to hear about that.
Yeah, and in fact, you hear from us before that, asking some, getting some feedback from, from families in the community as well.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you. You have a good night. Okay, moving on to the very last item tonight, and that is the Classification and Compensation Study update. So, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Yeah, this is my evening, for whatever reason. This is how all these items turned out, but this particular one is really for information. So the good news is, we went back out with the request for proposals for the Classification and Compensation Study. We bid it the way the council had requested in our last conversation. We got four responses within the timeframe and those responses were significantly lower cost than what we had talked about previously. Previously, we were talking about something over 90,000. We, we got three of them under 50 and the one that we're planning to go ahead with, and that's why this is more of a briefing, is 28,800. One of the big benefits of that one is that firm has, and we included their response in here, but they actually have some IT systems that will allow us to do some of this work ourselves going forward, which is a big benefit to us, particularly when we don't have a lot of HR staff, crunch numbers and all of that. So we're excited about that. Our hope would be with that, and we don't know yet. We won't really know until we start using it, but our hope would be that we wouldn't have to do these studies as frequently, that we'd be able to do a lot of our own work going forward and, and use really what they've got automated and dialed in with our employees to help aid that whole effort. So that, that's what we're planning to do and it's a little bit awkward because we came to you initially with something that required council authorization. Now we're well below where we need to be for council authorization, so we don't need any action from you, but we didn't want to just leave you hanging either. So we wanted to make sure we came back. We're planning to study both employee groups. There is a cost benefit to doing that that's represented there as well.
Thank you, Charlie. And if any, yes, go ahead.
I have a, a comment. My biggest concern was that staff recommended action was for council to authorize the contract of 93,000. Thankfully, we said, "No, go back." That amount was not okay. And now we have a $28,000 bid saving the city over $65,000. With our tight budget coming up, staff really needs to think about the recommendations and what is acceptable because authorizing that original contract would have costed the city an extra $65,000. So I'll just leave that at that.
So if you didn't know how to do math, you do now.
Charlie, I've just got one. Will this come back to council approval at our next meeting or do you want action tonight or what's the deal?
This doesn't require action. This is under the amount that can be approved by staff, so, yeah.
I, I will add though that this will come back to council. Once the study's complete, we'll come back to you with the, the actual report and talk with you then about the implications of that, how we proceed. And I, I do want to thank the council. We were pressed under a timeline previously. We were trying to get this done to incorporate the results into the budget. Obviously, we saved a lot of money by, by slowing it down. We detached it from the budget, so the downside of that is, we're gonna have to go into the budget without really knowing all the parameters in terms of our labor costs. But we did that and we extended it so that we could give consultants more time to get the work done than a compressed timeline. So I think that also benefited the, the way, the way that this came out.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Before we go, I just have a couple of things. First off, so we were talking about proclamations. There is another proclamation that on May 6, it's for May 6, the Childcare Professional Appreciation Day, for those who have children in, in, in childcare. So the Appreciation Day is to amplify our nation's collective gratitude for those who support the social, emotional and physical care of our children. So that's May 6, just to make you aware. And then one last update. So Skagit County has moved up into, from, from moderate to substantial, so, and substantial is considered kind of significant as far as the number of count that's happening. Skagit County's seven-day case rate increased by 111% since last week and our seven-day hospital, hospitalization rate increased by 50%. But the good news, the upside of this is that there's no, no deaths, no deaths this week, no new deaths. So the healthcare department is just asking that everybody take precautions. If you're gonna be in someplace where there is people who are compromised, be sure to test, wear masks, keep social distancing, kind of be mindful of your circumstances. Other than that, that is it. Anything else for the good of the order?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I am traveling next week and will be on my way back from California with my family, so I would like to request approval to be dismissed. I will try to jump online if I can get back in time, but I just am not 100% sure that that's gonna happen based on Seattle traffic.
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
So we have, this is for May 11th, correct?
Yes.
May 11th, okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Allen and it's seconded by Councilman Burns, providing an excuse, well, excusing Sarah from the, the meeting if she can't make it. So, wow, I had trouble getting that one out for next, for May 11th. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And Brendan, it was glad, I'm glad to see that you were able to join us online and hope that things are going well where you are at. And I didn't take roll call, but for the benefit, for Trina, for the, for your benefit, just to let you know, all council members are present. So with that, at 6:40, we are excused. We're done. We're adjourned.